We're getting more people, Mr. Varga. People keep moving, disappearing. Lost Alex. Oh, there's Alex. All right. Okay, Valerie, have you been able to capture the three guests we have? Mike Panic, Carrie Olson, and Paul Varga?
I don't see Paul Varga, but I'll put him down.
Oh.
How come we don't see all the people on one screen?
You're not seeing everyone on one screen?
No, no, I only see pictures across the top, and then a big picture of you.
Um, I'm not familiar enough.
It doesn't matter.
I just wasn't familiar enough with Zoom to change the view.
Yes. Can you hear me, Jeff?
I hear you, Paul.
Yeah, okay. I've been having trouble the last minute. I couldn't hear. Val, you're probably in speaker view on the upper right-hand corner. You should be able to change it.
Yeah, that does do it. Absolutely.
Okay, there you go. Okay, thank you.
Nice job, Paul. All right, it is 7:00 PM. So we will call to order the Town of Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for March 8, 2021. For Val, you're capturing in attendance. I know Jeff Schillinger said he was couldn't make it, and Tom Hastings could not. But it also looks like we have Doug and Bruce are not here for our alternates, and Jerry is out. So we do have a quorum. So we'll go with that. Okay, I will remind everyone that though Michael's picture is there, he's not here now for technical assistance. He has another commitment, but he got us set up, and we are recording the session along with taking minutes that we provide to the public also, because it's so fun to sit there and watch a meeting after the fact. So we've gone through the seating of alternates. The minutes from the February 8, 2021 meeting. Any comments, any issues?
None noted.
None noted. Do I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I like the motion.
Richard? Thank you. All in favor, indicate some way of saying aye. Abstentions?
I will abstain. Nord Jacoboff.
Thank you, Nord. So moved. Okay, thank you. I'd like to open up to public comments at this point. Please be aware that we will be discussing other issues more in length under unfinished business. If that's what you're here to discuss, but we'd love to hear your comments regarding those or any other issue you wish to share. Hello, Carrie. Carrie Olson.
Hi there. How are you?
Very well. How are you?
Ashford resident. I'm also an owner of property on Lake Chaffey and a member of the Board of Directors. I am not addressing the commission tonight as a member of the Board of Directors, but in my individual capacity as a property owner. I first and foremost want to thank the commission for recognizing that the areas surrounding our Ashford lakes are unique, especially from a zoning standpoint, and that they pose their own challenges. From the Lake Chaffey perspective, many of our lots, if you will, were created in the 1940s. They're pre-existing and extremely non-conforming to current zoning. I want to apologize. My colleague, Mike Panic, submitted a cover letter with responses to your questionnaire on behalf of the Board of Directors of Lake Chaffey. I did not have the opportunity prior to the deadline for that submission to adequately review the existing zoning regulations in respect to the properties at Lake Chaffey, but I will do so. And again, I apologize. The two overarching points that I wanted to make is the first one is that I wholly agree with Mike Panic that before any regulations are finally drafted or submitted for public hearing, that all of the Lake Chaffey residents receive a copy and have an opportunity to respond either to the questionnaire or to the draft regulations. I think it would be the more efficient way to go. And the reason I say that is that we are, we are all one lake community, but we are not all similarly situated. So no member of the Board of Directors can really speak for the entire community. Some of us are lakefront, some of us are not. Some of us have existing lake views, some of us do not. So again, I think it's imperative that the members of the association all have that right to respond to the questionnaire in their individual capacity. The other point I wanted to make is that we are all subject to express deed restrictions, and that any draft zoning regulations, I feel strongly should take into account those deed restrictions and not undermine them or the ordinances adopted by the Lake Chaffey association in any way. And then the other point I wanted to make was that the lake and really the town is subject to a very old, but still effective consent order from the deep regarding sanitary sewage. So again, we cannot look to zoning regulations that allow for expansion or otherwise without appreciating that there needs to be also a consideration of sewage man, sewage man around the lake. And this is especially true with those properties that abut the lake directly. So again, I would just ask that any draft regulations be forwarded to the lake residents directly, that they be allowed to respond prior to putting forth those regulations for a public hearing and adoption, so that we can get a better handle on a consensus, or if not a consensus, at least a majority opinion on really what is best for our lake community. But again, I want to, the overarching comment that you should take from this tonight is that I so appreciate that you all recognize that our lake communities are unique and that we do need to have a unique consideration from a zoning standpoint. And so I thank you for your time.
Carrie, if I could comment, and I address this knowing that you are a land use attorney. The, I was reading some of the comments that were sent in from the survey that was sent out. I think it would be remiss of us if we led the residents of Lake Chaffey and Ashford Lake to think that they were the ones voting on the land use regulations. They will have their chance to make their comments known at a public hearing. But the way the system works, and you can affirm it for me, is the Planning and Zoning Commission is elected, and we hold a public hearing where we receive input from the town and those affected, and we take that into into consideration. But the determination of what we accept or do not accept in terms of regulations is made by the Planning and Zoning Commission, not by a popular vote of those that may or may not think that they have that ability to make that vote. And I'd appreciate, as you communicate with the folks at the lakes, that you could phrase it probably better than I just did.
So I'm going to put my land use hat on, and you are correct that any adoption of a zoning regulation must be preceded by a public hearing and comment, and that ultimately there is a vote taken by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The point of my comments tonight is to say, I so appreciate that this commission is asking for input from the residents that are most affected by any change in zoning regulations for our lake communities. And it's not just Lake Chaffey. It's obviously Ashford, Ashford Lake as well. And what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that while it was very generous of you to accept preliminary responses from a few members of our Board of Directors, my position as a land use attorney and a property owner is that we cannot and do not speak for the entire lake community. We have not had a public hearing on this matter. We've not had a public discussion. Indeed, the board has not had a joint discussion on what their position is on any proposed zoning regulations. So, so again, while I appreciate you, you looking at the responses from the directors that did submit amends, they're acting in their individual capacity, and they can't speak for, at this juncture, the entire lake community. There's been no vote taken. And as you can see, not all of them agree based on the questionnaires as to what the appropriate response from this commission should be. I would also say that to the extent that you're trying to accommodate those of us who live our own property in these lake communities in order for this to be a smooth process and something that is accepted by the members of the community, that does not become controversial or opposed, the more upfront information that you get from those that are directly impacted, I feel is to the benefit of the commission. Again, you don't have to accept my, my suggestion. But again, as a land use attorney, having those preliminary discussions, workshops, questionnaires, comment, and answer before a final draft of any regulation is submitted for approval is always in the best interest of the community. You should also know that this planning and zoning commission, and I was a member of it back in the, and I'm ashamed of it, I'm going to date myself, in the late 80s, when they were revamping their plan of conservation and development, sent a questionnaire to the entire town. We're not even just talking about the lake residents, but the entire town to get their feedback on what our plan of conservation and development should look like. And so, so again, all I'm saying is, you know, there's precedent here for this commission to receive and accept public comment prior to proposing anything. And I just strongly commend you to keeping up with that process. And, and again, you may get very few responses, but at that point, then the members of the community have no right to complain, right? Because they were given an opportunity. So so again, I appreciate your consideration, and I do encourage you to invite all members, especially those directly affected, to comment prior to proposing a final draft.
And Carrie, my comment was simply aimed at managing expectations. So we don't think that this is a town-wide vote on what should or should not be done. You know, we absolutely want your feedback, everyone within the lake association's feedback, but we just have to make them, make sure they understand that this is not a vote. I recall in vivid detail when we had our public hearing on the Dollar General application. There was basically someone piped up, you mean we can't vote on this right here now? There was a feeling that you showed up for the public hearing, that you had a chance to vote on what should be, should or should not be done.
I'm sorry if I misunderstood and I went far afield. You are absolutely right. Once a final draft is proposed, a public hearing is set, the public has the right to comment. And you are obviously anticipated to take into accord those comments, but at the end of the day, the Planning and Zoning Commission makes the ultimate decision. Correct. It's a legislative decision on your part.
Appreciate any help you can do to manage that expectations.
I would be happy to help.
Thank you.
Okay, Carrie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, Mike. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mike.
For listening.
I couldn't have said it better than Carrie. As I already said, as, as most of you here know, I'm the president of the LCIA and was the one that was, got the questionnaire that you sent out. I appreciate that you sent the questionnaire out. We did have a discussion at our last meeting about it briefly and what we could do. And as my letter stated that I sent back with our questionnaires, there was a strong opinion that feedback from everybody in the association and not just the 12 board members would be more appropriate in this. I'm happy to hear tonight that there will be a public hearing at some point, whether it's, you know, you know, when it's set that there'll be some public hearing so that members of the lake will be able to join in either in person or on a Zoom call to talk about regulations that you did. And I, as Carrie said, in general, the board is not thinking that we're going to be voting and telling you guys what to do, but just, we wanted to be more in tune with the fact that we would like all of the members of Lake Chaffey to be involved, and that notifying them would be a good step in doing that. But knowing that there's a public hearing, certainly the board and myself and Carrie and others will make sure that we do our part to make sure that everyone as a resident knows that there are meetings and there is opportunity to be heard. You know, so, so knowing that there'll be a public hearing is, for me, comforting. That way you know you get a chance. I know I was at an inland wetlands meeting recently where there was some, some things that were with the Lake Chaffey, and there was, there was pause about maybe not having a public hearing, and then people wouldn't be heard. So I'm glad, hearing that there's a public hearing, you know, I think for both Carrie and I, I don't want to speak for her, but knowing that people will have the opportunity and knowing that they'll be notified, not only by Lake Chaffey Association, but by the town will be helpful. And in no way shape or form did the board think that, you know, because we sent our questionnaires back that that was going to make the law. We definitely did not think that. And I think, as Carrie said, that's not what we are bringing to the table tonight. So again, appreciate a few minutes of your time. The letter stands for itself, and I did notice that Ashford Lake did respond as well with just one questionnaire that seemed to, you know, have answers for just either one person, or I don't know how they.
Let me just say that Ashford Board, Lake Board met and had pretty lively discussions over each question, but came to a consensus. So you just get one answer because they.
No, I understood. And that's, again, they, they took the, we understand. We take the questionnaire and, and answered with one answer. We did bring it out to all the board members. But on top of that, like my letter said, that I submitted, you know, both Carrie and I and several other people, we had the same kind of discussion, I'm sure Ashford Lake had. We feel it's necessary to let everyone know what's going on and have the opportunity. And, you know, whether it's a questionnaire or a notice or something so that all 244 residents know, that's really what we're kind of getting at tonight. We certainly weren't saying that we were making the law. We just want to be a part of your thought process, and that's it. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Yes, Paul.
I just, I'm going to go backwards from when I had the notes written. In reference to the questionnaire, I think it's great, but I'm gonna kind of push it back on the two lake groups. It's, it's on you, your people, to let your residents and your, and those associations know about this, because I can speak, and so can the commission speak to, when you get people involved, and as they go through this process, and they hear input from people who are affected, it does a lot better than just at the public hearing. So these meetings go on every other week. They're posted. People should attend them if they have an interest in what's going on. That's how, you know, when they did, we did the RA, the RA zone stuff this past summer. We had a lot of people who were interested and participated, and I think the commission would agree that, you know, yeah, we had some pretty heated and long meetings, but in the end, I think we got a good consensus of where people wanted to go with that, that live in. I don't live on a lake. I live in the middle of nowhere on Zeitzik Road, so. And the first thing I actually had was backwards, and this is kind of for Mr. Williams. I want to make sure that a couple meetings ago, when we were, when you were talking about the exit 72 proposal and the changes in the industrial zone stuff, I actually, I think I was misconstrued. I support about development up there. My concern is that we make changes or you make changes that are going to allow something to happen that, that may cost the town in the future without knowing about it. And obviously, because I'm with the fire department, one of the things that came up was the building height and fire suppression. There's ways around that. In the other industry I'm in, we call it equivalent level of safety. So there's ways to do that. I just wanted to make sure that people, the commission understood that just because somebody says they're going to do something, put in a sister and system or whatever, we need to make sure that those rules are in place somewhere, whether it's by special permit or in the regulation, to make sure that the town doesn't take the burden of the cost later on down the road. You know, for instance, I think somebody mentioned something about, oh, we're going to buy a fire truck. Well, that's great, but you have to have people to staff it and operate it and train, etc. So I just want, and I, and I know that that gentleman was back on a couple of weeks ago. I'd like to see the commission move forward on that. Obviously, he's interested in selling it, and I'd like to see something put up there that can generate some tax revenue so they can take it off of my back. All right. Have a good night, and I'll be listening. Thank you.
Yeah, Paul, let me make one comment to that is, any development at exit 72 would likely fall under a special permit. And in the most recent changes to the land use regulations, we put in place a fee structure for these special permits that would be 1% of the value of the development or $50,000, whichever is the greatest. So if someone comes in and proposes a $5 million development, they would have to put up in escrow 1% of that, that the town could use to do studies on things like fire, like traffic, like environmental impact, and all the above. So we built into it the ability so the town does not have to spend their resources to do those studies as part of some big development that would come to town.
Sounds good to me.
All right. At this time, and I should have done a interruption of the situation, I'd like to be sure, let's see, Doug Jenny has joined us. And Valerie, I'd like to seat Doug for.
Oh, Jerry.
I know. I know you're here, Jerry. Hang on. I'd like to seat Doug for Jeff Schillinger. And also at the same time, joining us just about the same time is Jerry DeFrane as a full member. So have Jerry on the board at this time. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to thank the members of the Lake Chaffey Improvement Association that joined us and gave their comments also. And again, please realize that we are acting for basically two lake communities, and getting their input is very important to us. I appreciate Paul's comments from earlier. We did work very, very, try to work very, very closely, maybe not at the beginning, but I think we've learned some lessons, lessons learned regarding working with other impacted groups when it comes to things like the ag commission, working with us when it came to residential agricultural changes to our regs. And their input is very important to us, and just as gaining the input from the owners, basically the people who live there, who probably have the most vested concerns in and around what's going on with them, and we want to be sure that we bring them into it and that they're part of the, the solution we're looking to do, not just having it handed to them, here you go, chew on that for a while. Yes, Carrie.
Yeah, so my only question, because I couldn't tell, I was having some difficulty downloading the documents, is where are the draft regulations at this point? Have we, do we have a draft or?
We really, we are in the very, very fledgling stages of that. Our zoning enforcement officer has provided a few pages of items, mostly with things like setbacks, height of buildings, coverage and things like that. We've made some comments that I think we're going to talk about a little bit on this meeting, but really nothing for public consumption as of yet.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Also, I'd just like to make one quick comment. And Mike, I hope you don't think I'm throwing you under the bus or anything like this. Because we, you know, we're trying to move things along, obviously, and one of my statements to you or one of my questions, I asked you to clear off your crystal ball. And my question at a meeting or two ago was, did you think it was better for us to send the survey to the 244 residents individually or to send it to the board? I think we captured that in the minutes. And at the time, you said, like, it seemed like the board was representative of what the landowners would give feedback on. I fully understand feedback from all the board members and gaining their input and feeling that it needs to go to the individual owners and gaining that. So again, our intent was not to shortcut anything or to go, you know, through the least, least resistant group we could find, or least resistant group to work with. We'll, we'll, we will work with our zoning officer to provide the survey to a wider group to get better input and cumulate and bring that data together, so we can take a look at, again, the most important issues that we see out there. Again, it's probably not going to be a consensus, but we'll probably see some type of indication for direction.
Could I suggest that?
Hold on, Mike. Go ahead, Mike. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I think that Carrie and I are going to say the same thing. I think what the problem, not the problem, but I think what happened was, is two meetings ago, when you did ask me that question, I probably put it in the context of things that we've done within Lake Chaffey. And I, and, and in the minutes I said, I think at this point, it would be better to bring it to the Board of Directors. You have to understand that when I said that, though, that wasn't with me having a meeting with the Board of Directors to poll the Board of Directors.
Understood, understood. Once you got there.
Said that, then there was, we had, like Janet said, we had, I don't want to say it was heated conversation, because it wasn't heated, but we had discussion where the majority of the board members said that they felt like Carrie had said earlier, and she's speaking, I know as a resident, but the boards thought that it would be better than everybody be involved, so.
Absolutely. And we're fine, and we are fine with that. I mean, that's fine. So, okay. Carrie, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I just, bottom line, I was going to say, it's all my fault. Mike's intentions were honorable. There was no intent. I think he was trying to streamline for your purposes. And then in comes the land use attorney who says, wait a minute, we can't for everybody without them having an opportunity.
Was that the land, was that the land use attorney or was that the landowner?
Both, I guess.
Okay, okay.
No, as the Board of Director, I was given the opportunity to submit the questionnaire, but I, but I took it very seriously, and I frankly did not have the time to go through the regulations and the answers, questions, I thought thoroughly enough before the submission was made. But I, I am the one to blame. Ruffling the feathers and saying, look, we as a board, we don't have the authority to speak for all of these landowners. So it's my fault, not Mike's. No ill intention. Mike was trying to streamline the process.
Are you taking blame or are you taking credit? I can't quite tell.
As a typical lawyer, I had to complicate the issue. I apologize.
Very good. Richard, Dick, you were going to say something.
Yes, Rhethan, having the Planning and Zoning Commission make a mailing to the residents of Lake Chaffey and Ashford Lake, I would suggest that the Board of Directors of Lake Chaffey and of Ashford Lake manage the process of polling their residents and then submitting that polling back to us.
We'll have to have a discussion on that with the board outside of the public hearing, excuse me, outside of the public comments here. We can talk about that. Okay, any other public comment? Hearing none? We will move on. Thank you. Thank you all for your comments.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Alex, any bills?
I don't have any bills right now.
Okay. Um. Mike, I was going to read, under correspondence, I was going to read your letter. Would you like it read into the record, or would you prefer just what you're, what you've interpreted?
I think Carrie and I have summed up the letter almost to the T, so I think we're good.
We will not beat that anymore. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Sure. I have no other correspondence except for what we're going to be dealing with for the unfinished business. So under unfinished business, we're talking about update on the Lake District regulations. Okay, so I'm going to attempt to share my screen. Okay, so I'm going to attempt to share my screen. And if I can get to my desktop here appropriately. That's not gonna work very well. Okay, I'm gonna go to the regs that Dick and Mike have been looking at and working with. So, Richard.
Yeah, Jeff, there's two documents. There's my email that summarized what I did. There is also a extract of Coventry's regulations of what they did. And there's a red line markup of the proposed regulation that Mike had done that I had prepared. All of those were in the pre-meeting documents that were on the, on the website.
And I am not, I'm better with Teams than I am with Zoom, so in gaining the access to my desktop, that's gonna turn difficult here, but we'll see what we can do. Okay, the three, do you remember which date you were? I know you've got the red line regs from the sixteenth, January sixteen.
There was an email that was the cover email that was the changes and that was dated January the sixteenth.
Okay, that's.
And it was to you.
Yep, got it.
And in that, there's a bullet point summary. And I should add as a preface to this, I was a resident of Coventry when they were going through a lot of their issues in terms of putting sewers into Coventry Lake, which has been started, but I should add, there's never, has never been completely finished yet. And I had a number of friends that owned property on Coventry Lake. And I was also a property owner distant from Coventry Lake and was concerned about how the sewers were gonna be paid for by the residents of Coventry, not just the residents of Coventry Lake. So I was on an ad hoc committee to represent the issues associated with the residents. Didn't accomplish much, it was my first foray into these type of things, but it educated me quite a bit.
Alright, um, so what I have up is the, the draft regs that Michael had started regarding the Lake District. And in the red, obviously, we have Dick's comments to.
I don't see them, Jeff. I just see your email list.
You don't see those, huh? You don't see my screen with the regs?
No.
Let's do this. Nope, that's not it. Does everyone just see the email? They don't see the?
See your outlook.
That's funny.
Maybe if I could just take a second and summarize what I had proposed.
Well, if we do, go ahead.
Yeah, Mike was trying to put forth things in more specificity than seemed to be necessarily. I, I looked at what Coventry had done and they had said that they would go with a ten percent lot coverage with a potential expanded to fifteen percent. And they had verbiage in their regulations as to how they would do that. The average lot size on Lake Chaffey is ten thousand eight hundred and sixty. Ten percent is a thousand eighty-six. I went through probably two or three dozen of the property cards of, on Lake Chaffey and saw that the majority of what I found, random sampling, were buildings between seven hundred and fifty and a thousand square feet. I, I noticed that over the years, without really going through special permits, there were a lot of additions put to buildings and sheds adding to buildings. Looking as I, I drove around for probably two or three hours, Lake Chaffey. I don't claim to be an expert to the people that live there, but I saw, you know, two, three, sometimes four sheds or additions put to properties. Many covering large percentages of the ground area and likely maybe built on top of some of the septic systems that were there. I, I couldn't tell because I didn't know what the septic system were. But it, it, it did seem that there was a lot of additions that had been put through without going through special permits. I also looked at Ashford Lake. Ashford Lake, the average lot size in Ashford Lake is seventeen thousand four hundred and twenty-four. Ten percent is one thousand seven hundred and forty-two. It doesn't seem like a ten percent would be an issue for Ashford Lake. And indeed, I looked at some of the property cards there. There were some larger homes, but a lot were not much bigger than those around Lake Chaffey. Basically, anytime one would be adding a addition that increases the lot coverage. And by the way, a open deck would not be a, something that would increase lot coverage. But a physical addition that would block rain getting down to the property or paving of a, of a driveway. All of those things would be something that would have to go through the special permitting. And would it require to have a permit issued from the Northeast Health District to say that whatever they're doing would be in compliance with the septic system requirements? So following that, that would not be a problem. I also looked at some of the issue of and I, I don't know, Mike, you may have been the one that made the comment, or someone else from Lake Chaffey about there being McMansions built close to the water. A good friend of mine bought up two lots on Lake, on Coventry Lake and built a four-story home on the footprint of one of the lots. And basically blocked off the view from two, two or three lots behind him of the lake. And he ended up going to court, being sued and lost and had to pay a twenty-five thousand dollar fine on that, didn't it to tear the house down? But that idea of allowing large height development was a real hot button trigger in Coventry Lake. So I would really encourage the lake associations to think about that. Because the whole idea of being part of that association is see the lake. And if someone puts up a great big four-story home in front of your, your property, that would, I think, would be something that would be of concern. Coventry extended to forty feet. I had looked at what was done in several of the other towns. Lisbon, Lebanon, and several others. And a lot of them were definitely less than the forty. I had thrown up as a proposal, you know, to keep it down to twenty-five feet. But again, that's something would be good to get the feedback of the association on. Mike's initial draft of a, of a and we can't put that up there. But he, he had a proposed.
Let me try this again. See if you get this here. Any luck? What are we seeing?
Just seeing everyone smiling faces.
Really? It's not allowing me to share unless Mike didn't give me the maybe he didn't give me the ability to. Still smiling faces?
There it is.
Okay, very good, okay.
Okay, the red are my comments to what Mike put forward. And we had revamped in the last go-round of our land use regulations, the definitions, which is section three in our regulations. Euclidean zoning may be something that Carrie knows a lot about and Mike knows a lot about. But generally speaking, I think that needs to be defined in the definitions.
Well, I think we, in talking with Mike this afternoon, we already do Euclidean zoning. So defining it, I don't know if it really requires to have the definitions and have it added in, if it's something we've been doing for all these years.
I, I, I just made that comment just so we, we would be complete. It's, it's not a deal breaker by the least. He indicated that the accessory structures would be allowed in law apartments, home occupations, farm stands. He also indicated special permitted uses. In light of the lot sizes that are in both lakes, I, I can't see where we would want to permit interior lots is defined in section four A. And I can't imagine we would have places of worship, education, and philanthropy. So I suggested we, we take those off. Bed and breakfast is a possibility, short-term rentals. And we addressed that at length in a rewrite of the most recent land use regulations. And in talking with Janet in particular, who's a resident of Ashford Lake, there is a lot of concern about rentals on the lake. And we want to, we want to make sure everyone's aware of what we've done to try to provide some regulation of those to protect the property owners. Keep on going down. Don't post everything I think he had there. We're pretty, it seemed to be a pretty good step. If you come on to the second page, he's got the table. It indicated that the maximum building height would be twenty-five feet, that the lot coverage would be ten percent. Which includes the building and impervious, impervious median things like a paved driveway. I recommended taking out the impervious lot coverage as a separate definition, because it's not necessary in the way we define building, you know, lot coverage. I'd recommended that we build a night not be increased over that of the existing building when rebuilding. And that to be consistent with the rest of the regulations, if someone were to come in and try to cobble together new lots that otherwise, that the lot size minimum would be the same as in the IRA zone, which is ninety thousand square feet. This would be prohibited building a new house on a vacant non-conforming lot. And we would use language similar to what is in the Coventry's language, which is a separate document. I don't know if you can pull that up, but I had sent that along too. And Carrie and Mike, this is our first pass, okay? So these are not set in stone, but Mike made a pass. I looked at the surrounding towns and the experience that I had have with Coventry and which seemed to be the best example for us to look at. And these are the kinds of things that we're thinking of.
Just some feedback on the table that I wanted to show. And again, this is just giving an idea of really what we're talking about. Can you see that diagram?
Yep.
Okay, so what I simply did was take a lot, a ten thousand square foot lot at this point. Each of the squares represents ten feet, a hundred times a hundred, ten thousand square feet. In this part here, if you look down the left side of the page, under the yellow ten thousand square feet lot. The yellow boxes indicate if that's, that was, that were a full rectangle. That indicates a house that's forty by sixty or twenty-four hundred square feet. The small blue box up to the left would be a well, for example. And the small brown box farther over to the right is identifying septic, which is a ten foot from the house and fifty feet from the well is the requirement. Also, the green section down in the lower left-hand corner is a paved driveway of twenty by twenty. Which isn't, isn't a large driveway, but yeah, enough for two cars, basically. So that gives on a ten thousand square foot lot, twenty-eight hundred square feet of impervious area. And that's twenty-eight percent. Also, when you look at the setbacks that are proposed of ten feet for the side, twenty feet for the rear, and some combination of twenty feet or a ten percent of the I can't remember what the term was he used, ten percent of the contextual standard. Which I need a definition on, but that's okay, we don't need that right now. So what I tried to do was just show three examples. So that's a tenth, that's a twenty-four hundred square foot house on a ten thousand foot lot. Then if we look at the the, on an eight thousand square foot lot, which would be smaller than this, obviously, we're talking about a house that's with the small yellow bricks to it. That's a twelve hundred square foot house, thirty by forty, with the same twenty, twenty by twenty paved driveway of four hundred square feet. And that's sixteen, total of sixteen hundred square feet of impervious area, or about twenty percent on an eight thousand. And I don't know if, if your pictures are in the way, my pictures are in the way, but I think I can read this. Over to the left, excuse me, to the right side of the page, what I have is the small blue box, a small set of six boxes that make up a six hundred square foot house, twenty by thirty, with the paved driveway. So about a thousand, which is, which would be about ten percent on a ten thousand square foot house. Or it's ten thousand square foot lot. So when you put in the setbacks and everything and put in the well and put in the septic system and all. I, somewhere in there lies the truth. I'm gonna have to plug in soon too, I have a little bit. But, again, that's, that's a pretty small footprint on a ten thousand square foot lot. And we're not saying all the lots are ten thousand square feet. And so we're trying to get a rule that fits effectively and works effectively for both larger sized lots and smaller sized lots up to a certain size. Obviously, that's allowable. Even right now, our RA requirement is a footprint of nine hundred square feet, I believe. For a minimum building space. So again, this was just to give some perspective on what it meant to be a, on a ten thousand square foot lot, a six hundred square foot house. A twelve hundred and a twenty-four hundred. And what someone who buys one of those lots, what they might or might not want to be doing based on the regs we put in.
And Jeff, I would, you know, preface, anything that someone wants to build a house there, they're gonna have to go in front of, you know, the the Northeast Health District, which would mean looking at the number of bedrooms and the usage and the septic system that exists there, and whether that septic system could support the houses being built. There may be twenty-four hundred square foot houses being proposed for one of the lakes. I sure as the dickens didn't see anything resembling that in my two or three hours. I would defer to the, the boards for both the lakes to look at what they have for their homes. The other thing is that paving driveways is not a great idea. Because that increases your impervious zone. It's okay on my five acre lot that I have, that I have a paved driveway. But it's not, you know, okay for a, you know, quarter acre lot, you know, around the lakes. Because putting paved, you know, pavement in there increases the, the impervious zones. So there's, the whole idea is that you're going to have to adapt what you do in these areas. So you can meet these criteria that would have a safe septic system and have something that would not have a lot of runoff going into the lakes. So, you know, I, I understand the exercise you went through. You know, I would encourage, you know, to get the lake districts to look at what their inventory of, of, of homes are. A lot of them did not seem to be that big a homes. But, you know, that's something that we can use those lake district boards to help us with as far as determining what that existing inventory is. I think I've said on many discussions that we've had where someone has bought up three or four of these lots and they were trying to sell them and they wanted to build a home and we've said that they're not buildable. And, and they were selling them as strictly as lots that you put a. as lots that you could put a picnic table on and get access to the public beach, the association beach on the lake, but not to build a home on them.
Right. Well, again, and they do come, as you said, you know, they come with all the same requirements of the Eastern Highlands Health District. And I can tell you, just from perusing some of the surveys that came back just briefly, again, one of the biggest concerns that comes up is that, you know, the septic systems that are there, many of them are aged, many of them are not adequate for the size of the house that's there right now, let alone putting something larger on there. And I think however we can do this, however we can require, or let's say, gain some type of input on this type of septic system that's going in there would behoove us when it comes to working with Eastern Highlands on any type of site plan that they're working with.
The, one of the things, maybe I didn't see the documentation, but it appeared, and this is going back, you know, 10, 20 years, it appears that the built-in official was okay in additions to homes, changes of accessory structures without going through a special permit, or even the Eastern Islands Health, Health District.
Well, what I think you find, and I think that's what Mike was referring to, Mike Damato, was that a lot of these places are simply bypassing the planning and zoning, knowing that they don't qualify, and going to the zoning board of appeals, without any type of input from us, or any type of refusal from us, or saying that we're not going to accept their variance request. And again, going directly to zoning board of appeals and zoning board of appeals, again, passing a number of, allowing a number of these changes to take place because of the restrictive nature of the lots themselves.
Jeff, it's Janet. I'm wondering if there is any standard or someplace where we could get about what the best practice is as far as what percentage of the lot to leave, to leave open, rather than trying to decide, oh, should it be 10%, should it be 15%, should it be 20%? There was any, any guidance from deeper, the Health District or any place?
Janet, I could find nothing in the statewide. All I could rely on is going to the surrounding towns that had lakes similar to what we have. And I admit that I'm probably prejudiced because I lived in Coventry, was more familiar, but I found what was done in Coventry to be more comprehensive. Don't have my notes in front of me, but I believe maybe Lebanon was one of the most restrictive, much more restrictive than Coventry, which would basically not permit any development whatsoever around the lake. But I think Coventry seemed to strike a balance between allowing some improvements, but not allowing, you know, boundless improvements.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just questioning, is there any science that we can refer to? Is there anything that we can use as a guideline other than what we think is best?
Well, obviously, you know, we can reach out to Mike, who would probably speak up now and say that he has some research or some input that he can share with us. So we'll put that question to Mike as part of, you know, our discussion here and a question from the group.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and Janet, like we did when we were looking at the IRA zone changes, as far as coming up with, you know, overarching guidelines, all we could really do is look at what was done in the surrounding towns. I'll admit, I didn't do as exhaustive search on this one, as I did for the RA. I think in that case there, I had looked at 10 or 12 surrounding towns and looked at what each of the ones were doing. And I think in this case, I did four or five. We could add a few more to that, but it's, you know, and we can share some of those land use regulations, you know, I, I picked Coventry and sent it out to everybody. We can also pick some of the other ones and look at those.
Well, yeah, I understand that, but there's no, we don't know where they're getting their information from either. So are they just, how are they coming up with their, their numbers?
We can, we can also reach out to Sid with NCOG, the engineer there, and offer up some, some information that should be able to be shared with us as to, as you said, the not, I don't want to call it the ideal situation, but a, some type of standard that we can follow regarding waterways and impervious areas. Also, what was, oh, the other thing I just wanted to say was, again, in looking at some of the surveys and such, one of the things that was mentioned, and I think Carrie mentioned this also earlier, had to do with the deed restrictions that are in there. And I noticed, you know, in, either Mike hasn't delved down into that deeply, but again, it's something we do need to, at the very least, recognize and see what its impact is on any type of changes to regulations and such. So again, that's something we'll bring up with Mike when it comes to going through our next iteration on this document.
Jeff, I'd like to request each of the associations to send us their deed restriction language.
Do, don't we have, Mike, are you, or Carrie, are you aware if we have those already in the files for the locations?
I am not aware that the town has them. I would think that they do somewhere.
I thought we had them, you know, whatever the deed restriction is for that lot, for any individual lot. I thought we had it in there. But again, if we don't.
I could certainly provide it in case it's buried somewhere.
Jeff?
That'd be great. Yes.
Gary.
Yep.
Of the deed restrictions are on, are printed on your deed, or they're listed at the town hall with papers for your particular lot.
So we can.
As I remember, I know they're on mine because they read them to me when I bought the property.
I'm just trying to shut circuit, getting the information to the commission.
Oh.
If this, this exists within a document within Lake Chaffey and with Ashford Lake, simply send us a copy of what the deed restrictions are. I'm sure we can go to the town clerk and find him on various places, but I would rather have the.
If Mike has a single, if Mike has a single location of that, that would be, that would be very helpful if he has a single file or something as opposed to picking through all whatever, 120 locations.
And this kind of goes along with my comment I made earlier. I think it's much more efficient for us to use the board of directors and each of the associations as the way to get the input from their association members, and also to get information from them concerning deed restrictions and things like that, rather than us as a commission trying to go on 200s of individual property owners.
The prop, the deed restrictions are the same for every lot.
I realize that, Jerry. It's just, it's just, I'm, I'm trying to establish a flow of information. So we're not, I mean, if we go down to Sherry much and ask her for what's on your lot, how do we know that is for every lot? If it comes from the board, it is coming from one place that speaks for the association.
Yeah, I believe they're all the same.
Okay, um, with, with Mike here, and I know Janet's the closest thing we have to representative from the Ashford Lake. What's your feeling on that? If we were to enlist your services, your help in disseminating the survey to your members? Is that something that is feasible for you to work with us on?
Well, you know, as I spoke last time, without checking with the board and.
I said, I was just gonna say, you probably just told it to your board. No, I fully understand, Mike.
We do have a meeting this Wednesday night, and I can get feedback and we can see what the thought process is. I will not speak for Ashford Lake, but unfortunately, Lake Chaffey, with the previous years of things, is not flush with cash to pay for postage and postcards and things like that. I'm not sure that the town is as well, but maybe there can be some sort of community effort to see what we can do and.
Let me ask this. Do you have any type of email list of your members?
Well, we started one about four years ago when I came to town because I thought that things were changing and postcards were obsolete. We also obviously have a lot of people, myself included, who, you know, don't live on the lake full time. So, you know, it's not like everybody's around all the time. So that always posed the challenge for us. So we started an email list, but I would say it's far from completed, where I would trust it as a useful tool at this point.
Okay, all right. That, that, that's fair enough. I understand.
While I have just one second, I just wanted to ask one question. The, as pictures speak a thousand words, that graph that you just had on the screen with the dots, the squares?
Yes.
I didn't see that when I downloaded some information for ten. Is that something that's either available or I can have the board send to me? Because having that and being able to show a picture of that to our board and to understand that 10% in different sizes would be immensely helpful, other than me just explaining that in numbers and people looking at me with zombie eyes.
I tell you what, I'm gonna send it out to you, just because you made me feel so good, because I worked so long on it and you appreciated the effort. So.
What I did, and I think that, you know.
I will definitely send it to you.
Awesome. I appreciate that very much.
Sure.
And Mike, if there is not a way within Lake Chaffey or Ashford Lake to do this, the alternative that I would propose we do is we put a notice in the citizen and indicate how they can respond. And everyone gets the citizen. And if they want to respond, they could respond to a certain email or post office box that would send in their, their response to the survey. So we could do it that way. If, you know, it would be no cost to you. But I was thinking that you wanted to be the conduit of how your association members wanted to communicate with us.
Understood, and I appreciate the offer.
And I'm not actually on the Ashford Lake boards, and I certainly can't speak for them, but I think that they would be amenable to working with us to get, you know, residents' responses.
So to have a resolution of this, Jeff, are you still there? I think we lost Jeff.
Where did he go?
We have two options in front of us. One is that we let the associations manage the process using their best way, or we use the citizen, which is what we use for notice of public hearings and other would. And we would send out the information for them to respond back to planning zone directly.
Dick, all of our members at the lake don't live here. They don't get the Ashford citizen if they live out of town.
Well, I'm, you know, there's only so much we can do to get people's input. I mean, either the association has to do it, or we have to use the only means we can, we, we have to our things. We don't necessarily have email addresses and addresses for everyone that may own property in the, in the lake. And that would be a pretty sizable job for us to ask the town.
Maybe we could just notify all the people that don't live here.
Well.
The Lake Association, we could notify the people, property owners that don't live at the lake.
I think it might, might be to do both. If you put it in the newspaper, I mean, it's all about communication. So if you could put it in the newspaper on your end, and then on our end, if we could find a way to get to those other residents that might not get the newspaper as kind of a two-pronged approach, I think that's a fair enough compromise to make sure that all lake residents are notified.
That's pretty much what I was saying, yes.
That's a good idea.
Okay, so the action forward would be, you would reach out using your own means to the association members. We can provide a link on the town website for the questionnaire, the poll.
Okay.
And we can also put a notice in the Ashford citizen with the link to the town website for the poll with instructions. If you want to make an input on this, you can make an input by downloading that questionnaire and sending it into the planning zoning commission.
I think that's a fair proposal in lieu of possibly getting scolded by Carrie again, but that sounds fair to me.
Yeah, the citizen does go to every single household. Excuse me, my battery died. It warned me a few minutes ago. Um, but yeah, it does go to every household. So that's, that's a great compromise, I think, and a great use of the citizen, especially with the way it's been used recently. So.
Valerie, did you capture all of that?
I did. I've got it.
Okay, so that's a, a resolution that does not have to be voted on. It's just adopted. And I will also go on to more surrounding towns and try to provide some summary of what we see besides just Coventry. I had determined Coventry made the most sense, but I can also find other ones and send those on to the commission. So you'll have a book similar to what we did for the RA zone.
Okay. So those were the lake district regs. As we have them now, we need some more work. We're going to work with the both commissions of the lakes to gain more input based on the survey through the means that have just been identified and that Valerie captured. Is there any further discussion at this point regarding the lake districts? We will talk with Mike and NCOG about recommendations regarding impervious areas. And also, I believe, Mike, you'll be able to send your file of the deed restrictions to Mike Damato, our CEO?
I will.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, could I speak? When you put this in the.
I can't, Valerie, Valerie, I cannot hear you at all. You're kind of cutting me out. I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry. Is there going to be a deadline given for when you want the responses returned? Or you're just gonna send this out?
No, no, we will, we will have a deadline.
Okay.
It doesn't need to capture right now in the minutes. We'll have that in the, in the communication itself.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that the deed restrictions be submitted to us prior to the next meeting, and that that we come up with the means of communicating to the citizen prior to the deadline for the next publication of the citizen.
Yeah, that would be the 19th normally. And once we speak with Mike, I'll work with him on a letter for the citizen. And then he can, since he's in the office, he'll be able to submit it to Sherry and the staff. Okay. All right. With no more discussion on the lake district regs, we'll go from there to the affordable housing statute. And I'm gonna try to share a presentation that Mike shared with me. Let me just see if I can get this up here. This is going to be PDF. Here we go. Can you see that?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So this is a presentation that Mike has worked with other towns on, and he put together. It's very short. It's again, trying to get a handle on what the affordable housing statute and requirements are, and actually defining what affordable housing is. I've highlighted a few key areas of this presentation, so I hope I do it justice as we go through it. So again, how did we get here? And what you simply see are the Blue River Commission that was formed back in the 80s with numerous recommendations. And that's when they created the Affordable Housing Appeals Procedure, referred to as 8-30G, which uh eight dash thirty G, which is the statute we're working with now. Um, it outlines an appeal process for affordable housing development, which essentially allows development to be built without complying with zoning regulations if the application is denied uh through Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, it gives uh it basically a a speed pass, if you will, if it meets the requirements of the affordable housing uh statute. Um, and again, in this case, the term affordable housing is any type of housing that meets a specific criteria of uh the statute, and uh generally, that's a percentage of a percentage of income. Uh, it's thirty percent, uh maximum cost cannot exceed more than thirty percent of eighty percent of the area median, uh which again, uh is the area median, the area median income. Uh, and it also has a uh deed restriction of a period of at least thirty years or is government backed, such as a CHFA, USDA mortgage. Um, we've had some talk, I know a lot of people think there's a lot of affordable housing in Ashford, and um well, I'll wait for that slide, we'll go back to that slide. Uh, and why do we need a plan? Well, again, we're coming into the last year of the July two thousand seventeen legislation that required uh a each municipality to either every five years adopt or amend an affordable housing plan, so again, we're coming to the end of the first five years. We're at the fourth year with one year to go, so we have one year to uh put such a plan in in place uh to increase the number of affordable housing developments in the municipality, or have a plan to do so. So again, we're looking to uh adopt and promote housing choices and economy diversity, including housing for both low and uh model uh income households. So. Um. Again, the plan needs to specify how the municipality intends to increase the number of affordable housing developments in the municipality. And it just starts talking about some of the ways in gaining information. Uh, and again, at the end, if the municipality fails to amend uh such a plan every five years, the chief elected officer of the municipality shall be, shall submit to the Commission of Housing uh a letter that explains why such plan was not put in place. And again, they do not have repercussions at this point, but um there's always that possibility similar to uh P O C D.
Jeff, I'm not sure if you cover it, oh. Maybe this is the next one, but basically, when we did the P O C D, we came to conclusion that there was less than, less than ten percent of the towns in the hundred and sixty-nine and districts were compliant.
Yeah, uh yeah, only thirty-one towns at the time were compliant, and and what you see here is uh any town in purple, and he does have, Mike does have Ashford highlighted here with the yellow border. Uh, does not allow multifamily developments beyond two units. Uh, uh with over a dozen towns in Connecticut only allowing a single family home. So, and if you look at our regs, we are, we are in that group also of one and two uh families with nothing greater than, we do have some language regarding community homes and such. One of the things on slide six that comes up is the current state of uh Ashford. Uh, it's, again, the plan is not a regulatory document like a zoning map or zoning regulations or the P O C D. Connecticut remains a home rule state, which means that the authority uh to regulate zoning uh is delegated to each municipality. And as Mike discussed it with me this afternoon, it would take uh quite a bit of effort and changes to existing law to move that out of the responsibility of municipalities. Uh, when it comes to Ashford, we currently have three point five percent of our housing stock as affordable housing. Uh, that's about sixty-seven units. Again, and as I was going to refer to, a number of people identify uh or try to identify the apartments uh that the various smaller and large apartment buildings we do have here in Ashford that have, you know, a relatively low um fee for their rental, however, uh, the problem is, they also need to have the deed restriction that uh maintains that, we're basically a I hope I don't go over my pay grade here, uh where basically that uh the requirement is the owner would not be able to change that or increase that significantly above the affordable hair of affordable housing level um over the thirty-year period. Uh, and uh again, if you go to the bottom bullet, um what we're talking about here is cost burdened also, we're looking at our uh elderly uh population who might want to stay in place, doesn't wants to downsize, but doesn't uh want to move out of town. Uh, and to find someplace to do that, and also the uh those that are cost burdened, that thirty-eight percent of our homeowners are considered cost burden, where they're using a greater percentage than thirty percent of their income to uh cover the cost of housing. And twenty-nine percent of renters, so again, one of the things Mike and I talked about had to do with the fact that these groups that are cost burden don't have the disposable income to spend uh in a town on restaurants or dry cleaning or, you know, anything along the lines that are considered above and beyond uh the bare necessities. And uh that's, you know, that's a significant group of people for us that are considered uh cost burden. So uh it's something for us to consider as to the why and wherefore of coming up with affordable housing. Uh, and again, I've shared this with the group before, when you look, when you talk to uh or get on any of the websites or webinars that are had, whether it's D-Segregate Connecticut or any of the other groups. Um, one of the things is, it's not uh housing that brings people in, it's jobs that bring people in. And then you need housing for them, and no one is, no one currently is beating the door down for Ashford to uh come in and uh require us to have affordable housing, the sky is not falling for us. But we do have to have a plan that keeps us from being restrictive. Uh, that allows for the identification of possible uh the uh A D, ADWs, the affordable dwelling units. Um, and um, again, when it comes to an affordable dwelling unit, it's talking about something that's not the size of an apartment complex, but it has multiple units in it that possibly are uh either efficiency or studio, living quarters that don't require a sewage system, a septic, uh excuse me, a sewer line, but it requires uh a a present-day, well-functioning septic system to handle uh the waste issues when it comes to something larger than just a single one or two family home.
Yeah, Jeff, you bring up the issue of uh jobs in town. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but there is a a document that I can lay my hands on later that indicates the number of people that actually live in Ashford and that work in Ashford and where they actually work, we are basically a bedroom community. Very few people that live in Ashford work in Ashford. Think the largest uh number of destinations were the Yukon, um you know, Mansfield, after that was you know, uh problematic, uh so I mean, it's a, we're really not a a a town where people work in the town, live in the town, and own a home and own a rented home in the town. So it's uh, the job issue is is a real thing that drives us.
Right, right, very much, thank you for, thank you for that, Dick. Um, the other thing that uh Dick actually shared with me was a letter that was generated from the Planning and Zoning, and I'm sorry, I didn't come up with a copy on it here, um Planning and Zoning from Woodstock. And um Mike and I had a discussion on that uh document also. And I think the biggest point that came out of that, that I'm in, you know, full agreement with is um though I don't, I believe the stance that talking about removing the planning and zoning requirement, at least the zoning uh ability of responsibility of the town, the municipality, and putting it at a state level is kind of pounding a round peg into a square hole. What Stanford requires is different than what Woodstock requires, what Ashford requires is different than what East Hartford requires. So um, you know, we are I I agree with that point wholly, however, I think we do need to move forward and be proactive in reviewing our regs, making sure we're not restrictive, start to develop regs that allow for um the uh, again, that's, I hate using the term, but I'll use it, the fast pass, the ability of a approved um uh accessory dwelling unit or some type of affordable housing to be put in place um that does meet the needs of the population here in Ashford. Forward, whether it's um elderly of uh affordable housing, assisted living community that qualifies, uh and again, the important thing is that it qualifies under the affordable housing. I did speak with Mike about the um task force, if you will, or the work group that would come together, um I've spoken with Dennis Poitras, the head of the Housing Authority, and uh will be working uh with them. Uh, probably leading the charge on this, because again, it's very important for us to get this put in place, and it it varies from town to town as to who's picking up the gauntlet on this and moving forward, but uh as Dick has expressed and a few others have expressed, they think that, in this case, planning and zoning with the input and assistance from the Housing Authority, uh potentially the Board of Selectmen, and um uh, I was trying to think, there was another group that we mentioned in here. Um, oh, economic development also, and what that entails. Um, and having a group that is uh well-represented as well as uh on board with what it is we need to do to move forward with this to meet the state's requirements.
Jeff, you might also include social services.
Okay, thank you, Janet. That's a good point.
And I'll just point out that Melissa will tell you, every one of the families on her caseload is having trouble paying their rent for their mortgage.
Right, they probably easily fall within that uh twenty-nine percent of renters or homeowner, and thirty-eight percent of homeowners are cost burden. Probably where the vast majority of that uh group falls. So that was, that's just kind of the background, again, a quick uh piece, the last uh slide that uh Mike shares is uh uh the process, and I think this is the process he started for other towns, we have contracted with his group, we will be contracting with his group um to uh have it write up the uh the plan itself and work with us, again, you know, they're part of the task force, as well as, I have reached out to NCOG and gotten the name of a uh land use attorney, and I'm sorry, it uh I I'm missing it right now, I have to look back to John Filczek's email. Um, who has offered up pro bono um efforts to help us. Uh, at the least, I'd ask him to review our uh regulations, our housing regulations, to see where we're falling short, or what we have maybe is more restrictive than it should be, and give us a place to start when it comes to just simply working on the regs, letting alone finding a plan of providing affordable housing and moving forward. But again, uh this piece here, as you can see, is a uh six-step plan uh leading to uh adopting a final plan, which includes um public input and engagement uh and presentation at a public hearing along with preliminary evaluation of assessment of our housing stock. And uh, again, what we might be able to start putting together, even if it's a small percentage per year moving forward. Uh, identifying or providing input to gain affordable housing. And again, I think there'll be more input as to how 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 other towns are able to do this and put this together without putting the burden on uh our uh the financial burden on the town itself.
Jeff, I would add that uh one of the items that be added to looking at this is the wagon shed properties. Separately, we're trying to find a way to get them back in the tax rolls, and one of the uses of the wagon shed properties was to provide mixed-use housing in addition to a technology park. So that could be a potential site for things like this.
It's, 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 it's something obviously we can bring up uh as part of the work group and finding out, again, with the
Excuse me?
Board of Selectmen and their group, I'm sorry, yes?
Yes, he, what is the, he just said rev a shed property, I didn't get that.
He called it the wagon shed property, otherwise known as the K- the Kettle Rock property.
It's two hundred and sixty-some acres that are currently brownfields that are uh in the process of being remediated and hopefully brought back to the tax rolls. And that will then come to the town to find how we use that property.
Okay, um, that was kind of all of I had on this discussion uh regarding the affordable housing and moving forward and where we are, again, I don't expect us to start uh putting so much pen to paper when it comes to um the work group until July one, when we've got uh Mike and his company on board with uh the new fiscal year, uh which is where our contract with them would start. Um, however, we can do a lot of preliminary work and gain people, gain uh members of the workforce to uh be able to provide input and start doing that so they can hit the ground running uh come July one.
Uh Jeff, could you have Mike put this on the shared drive or whatever, so?
Sure, sure, absolutely. Um, okay, so uh that being that, uh we have no new business listed at this point, and.
I'd like to offer a couple. In in light of the uh memo I sent to you from the Chairman of the Planning and Zoning from Woodstock, I would propose that Ashford uh issue a resolution submitted to the state opposing statewide control of planning and zoning.
I think that's a great idea.
I agree.
Resolution of statewide control of planning and zoning. Letter from town, from commission. Okay, would um would you like to, would you like to, would you like to make a motion, would, actually, would you like to make a motion on that, we'll have some discussion?
Uh, yeah, I I would make a motion that we use some of the talking points that Woodstock used, and I would work with Mike Tomato.
No, 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 the motion, the motion is not to use the letter, the motion is to uh, as you already basically stated, to develop a resolution uh to provide to the state uh regarding uh our opposition to statewide control of uh planning and zone of zoning regulations.
Yes.
Okay, so Dick has proposed that, Jerry has seconded it. Um, I'd like to open up for discussion before we vote, uh I know I heard Catherine say she was in favor. Um, any discussion on that, I know you're, I know some of you are operating in the dark based on what uh Woodstock had put out, they specifically indicated four current pieces of legislation that are out there, and what we can do is we can share that. I'll share that with Valerie to provide in the minutes the letter, and you can look at the legislation itself. Um, a number of them were single-page uh items, then one was twenty-five pages, it had to do a lot with definitions and tweaking of a number of definitions when it came to uh affordable housing and um some of the uh pieces there.
Are the, are these, uh are these bills that are being discussed now in the legislature?
They are proposed, they are proposed, whether they make it through their committees or not, we don't know, but you know, they are proposed to go to the uh basically the
So that Woodstock gave you bill, bill numbers?
Yes, absolutely.
So, look them up and see where they are, because they're, they're going through the committees um this week and maybe next week, so things. this week and maybe next week. So things are fast.
So we'll have those, we'll have the letter shared with you by when the minutes come out before the end of the week.
Yeah, Janet, this is being pushed by Desegregate Connecticut, which I had sent the link out to their website. I think it went out to everyone in the commission. If not, the Jeff Relics can.
I know about Desegregate Connecticut. Yeah.
Yeah. And basically what they want to do is pull back all of the regulations for planning and zoning to the state level.
No, Dick, Dick, you're overstating it. Please don't do that. That's not what they're looking to do.
Well, I think, I think, Jeff, if you, if you would send out that information maybe before the end of the week, if people look up, you can look up the bill and see what's going on with it. Because if they're taking testimony this week, people can, you know, write or you can testify on via Zoom, Zoom if you want, but you can, you know, write in your testimony while it's being discussed.
Right, right. Exactly.
I didn't hear who commented on what I was overstating.
That was me. Dick, that was Jeff.
Oh.
I think if you look at, if you look at the five or six ideologies of Desegregate Connecticut, it does not say anything about pulling back the zoning responsibilities to the state level.
But what they're, what they're supporting is that, those bills. So we can go back and look at those in more detail, but there is a movement afoot to trying to unify planning and zoning across the entire state. And frankly, I think that takes local control, which has been the hallmark of how the state has controlled planning and zoning away from the towns. If you look at the people that are the members of Desegregate Connecticut, a lot of them don't even live in Connecticut. And if you look at the bios of the folks that are involved in that, it is, it's more of a a nationwide movement rather than just a Connecticut movement. So.
Well, it is, it is a nationwide movement. The Connecticut movement that has been taken over by people like your name, Sarah Bronin, Mayor Bronin's wife and people that are in Connecticut. And I think, I think they really, what they really want is more unification in affordable housing. So they don't want I forget which town it was that had that big brouhaha. They don't want towns like Stanford or Litchfield to be totally keeping everybody out, you know, any, any affordable housing out. I don't see that they, that they want to take over.
I mean, why, why would they offer up training for municipal zoning enforcement or zoning elected officials if they're taking it away from the towns? You know, it's, it doesn't make sense. Because that is one of their edicts to make sure that zoning boards are trained and know the law and know what it is as opposed to individual groups taking it on and doing various levels of training. It's almost, it's almost a certification.
And the training, Jeff, goes beyond just training. They want to have everyone that's a commissioner be certified as being trained.
Correct.
Like a registrar right now has to go through training to be a registrar, as opposed to being elected official. I'd encourage, encourage anybody to read those things in detail. The whole issue is, do you want to have some overarching group, be it private or state, telling what the town of Ashford can or cannot do relative to zoning? I mean, for instance, we were just talking about the Lake Districts. How could a state, you know, organization adequately represent what we're trying to do with the Lake Districts?
Well, I think we all agree with you, Dick. We're just not, that's necessarily what the state's looking to do right now.
So again, again, what I would say is take a look at the desegregate objectives as well as once we get that material put together and get it into Valerie and get the minutes turned around. Hopefully by Wednesday, I would think Wednesday or Thursday, we can have those minutes turned around. So you can see the material. Actually, what I will do instead of even waiting for that, I will grab the letter itself and share it with you that has the specific pieces of legislation. So you can go ahead and take a look at those and it won't slow things down if you're looking to make a comment or you're looking to share your thoughts and ideas on that.
Carrie, are you still on? I see your picture on there. Carrie Olson.
Okay. Okay, so Dick, did you have something else for new business also?
One last item. The Economic Development Commission met with Ashford Realty Trust talking about what they hope to do with the exit seventy two. And we're, we are in concurrence to trying to find a way that we can responsibly develop industrial, commercial development at that exit in concordance with the planet conservation development. So we will be putting together a resolution that will be sent to planning and zoning asking that we come up with land use regulations that are friendly to development for that location in accordance to the planning of conservation development. Mike Gantik is going to prepare a draft of that that the E D C will vote on at our next meeting this coming month. And we'll present that to the to the P Z, P C T.
All right. And we have nothing for the zoning officer report at this time, except for telling you if we didn't share before, I think I might have. I can't think of her last name. Hang on, let me gain her last name. Okay, I'm back. And maybe I did share this before, but Katie Conley is the new land use assistant. And she's really doing a great job working with Mike. A lot of positive feedback. And she's very motivated extremely helpful as they put together going through the files, reducing down the size of the files, making sure there's only pertinent information in the files of each of the properties in town, as well as again, working with the wetlands and the other land use commissions. So I just wanted to share that. And that's about it from there. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Jerry, second?
Amen.
Second from Dick. All in favor? Thank you very much, visitors. Thank you very much for joining.